Okay, next for your consideration is Resolution Number 98-2013. This is authorizing Tix.com as the sole source vendor to purchase a ticket processing system for the Civic Center's ticket sales platform during fiscal year 24. And we have our purchasing agent here, Amy Kornotl, and the deputy director of Recreation and Parks and Tourism, Katie Rouse. I would like to point out that this resolution number has a SM behind it. That means supermajority. In order for this resolution to pass, five council members would need to vote in favor of it.
Thank you. Senator Entertainment motion from council to approve Resolution 98-2023.
To move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Katie, I see you there.
All right. Great.
Kornotl, how are you?
Good morning. Katie Rouse, deputy director for Recreation, Parks and Tourism.
Amy Kornotl, purchasing agent.
So what you have in front of you is our annual sole source for Tix. Tix is the company that we use to sell tickets to consumers. We've been using Tix at the Civic Center since 2003. One of the things we do every year is we do basically an informal survey. My box office manager, Monica Thrash, performs that. She looks at other venues our size to see what they're using. Then she uses that to explore the other ticketing options. All that's been provided to you all. Tix is still the most affordable that will perform the tasks that we need done when we sell tickets. And so I also included what we've spent with them. The amount that we spend with them is based solely on how many tickets we sell. So they charge us for each ticket we sell based on the method that we sell it. So it's 25 cents if it's sold at the box office. It's $1.50 if it's sold over the phone or on the Internet. And those prices have been the same since 2003 when we started with them.
You say it's $1.50, but there is a... The only complaint I ever get is Recreation Park Civic Center, great operations. The only complaints I ever get are on ticket sales where they say, "My God, I want to go to a $25 event and it costs me $16 surcharge or $13 a surcharge." Is there any way we can find any relief in that? And would this compromise that since we're only going to one vendor now?
So the way that we calculate the fees also has not changed because these have not changed. That's something we look at during the budget process. So where that's something we charge the consumers, this is what we get charged to process our tickets. What we charge consumers, that's something we look at at the budget process to make sure that we're still covering our costs. One of the things that's been in the news a lot lately is the transparency of ticketing fees. Our fees are shown when you select a seat before you go to checkout. There's no hidden fees. We have a page on our website under the ticketing option that tells you what the fees include and what they're made up of. And then we also do, when we do our budgeting process, we look at other venues to see how much does it cost to go to WWE at the Civic Center versus how much does it cost to go in Hershey Park? And ours are, every time, have been quite a bit lower than every other venue we've ever looked at. So the fee that we charge is just basically covering our operations. The only thing that has increased, like the tickets haven't, but it has to cover the credit card fee and everything like that. So we do keep an eye on that. We try to make it as affordable as possible for the customer and still covering our expenses. They are able to generally, you'll save about $2 a ticket if you come to the box office and purchase it rather than purchasing on the Internet or the phone. So we try to provide that type of relief too for people that are local that are coming to shows. So it is something, we look at that part as well. We look at that during our budget process so that we can decide, are we making enough revenue to cover our costs or do we need to adjust that? So the way that fee is calculated has stayed the same as well.
It's not really relevant to the vendor?
It's not, but it is all included in one thing. So there is, the part of the fee that covers Tix has not changed because their fees have not changed to us.
All right. All's in favor of Resolution 98-2023, say aye.
Aye.
Pos. Motion's carried. Resolution 98-2023 passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Early. This time we open the floor for public comments. If anybody has any public comments they'd like to make, come to the podium. Please state your name, your county residence, and your concern.
Jim Atkins, Wycomico County. Just a quick comment about probably something that'll be discussed later today and is an ongoing problem. And that's the possible legal fight between the council and the executive over hiring and appointments. And my understanding is the council has to approve a additional attorney for this lawsuit. And I am urging you to approve that. That urge is not based off my opinion one way or the other, but off the fact that I believe several years ago with a previous executive, the council had the same problem. We now have this problem again. So let's litigate it and get a determination and a decision so this doesn't keep coming up down the road every time one side doesn't agree with the other side. Let's get an answer to it, put it to bed, and move on. Thank you.
Atkins, any other comments? Delegate Anderton, good to see you here today.
Good to see you, bro. Good morning, everyone. How you doing?
Yeah.
Morning.
So I'm glad I actually made it in time today to hear the previous conversation because it is a big issue. We worked a lot over the legislation after the referendum to legalize recreational marijuana was passed statewide. And it's a living document, so there's going to be changes every year. So if you do have concerns and things that you'd like to see addressed, you know, make sure we know. And, you know, we could try to work it through the legislative process and see what we can do to make this document that we're operating under more amicable from one end of the state to the other. You know, I'd like to see a lot more local control, obviously. You know, that's kind of my thing. But, you know, so the more input we get from, you know, from the counties and municipalities, the better chance we have of having more local input on how this whole new program process is implemented and maintained. Speaking of the session, starting on budget stuff now, we're scheduling meetings, looking at county priorities. So if you have priorities, please make sure we get a heads up so we can start working on that. And at that point, I kind of want to echo what the gentleman here said. You know, as you know, revenues are kind of up and down statewide, you know? So there was a write-down. There could be a surplus this year, could be another write-down. But if there is write-downs, tax dollars, grant dollars, things coming back to the county become more finite, more hard fought for, and more valuable. Not that they're already valuable because they come out of our pockets, but, you know, for places applying for, looking for that. And so other things are taken into consideration. And that is, how are the local governments getting along? You know, I've seen it before. We've been through it before in this very county under the previous administrations that we've had, and I don't want to see that happen again. So whatever we got to do to make sure we're on the same page moving forward, let's do it. I delivered the same message down the hallway, you know? And so, you know, I wasn't sure what I was going to say, but when I heard it addressed, you know, I felt that I might as well be fair and say it to everyone that the more cohesive, the more hand-in-hand we're working here locally, the easier it is for us to get big projects funded that we're looking to do, like the airport and other parts around the county. So if you need anything, give me a holler. If not, I'll see you all around town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comments? Seeing on council comments. Jeff?
I had to collect my thoughts and actually write them down this time instead of talking off the cuff. Since we were sworn into service on the council, we've had 35 people put in front of us for approval for various positions, directors, deputies, boards, commissions, and so on. We've approved 33 of those individuals with no problem, no drama, no controversy. The divisive rhetoric that has come out on several issues since we've been sworn in office is unproductive, unprofessional, and to be honest with you, it's exhausting. It's costing the taxpayers money in unnecessary legal fees, no offense to Mr. Wilber. Over the past several months, the council members have been contacted by numerous county employees in all of the departments with a multitude of concerns ranging from morale issues to the breakdown of the grievance process. I'm tired of hearing it. We have to process this information and determine the best course of action. Who do we send this information to? It's exhausting. It's time-consuming. It's unnecessary. We need to get past this. We are all working in the best interest of the citizens of Wycomico County. Over the past several months, there's been a significant amount of negative activity in the news and on social media. I'm tired of getting screenshots of what people put on social media. I'm tired of it. This is unprofessional and, again, unproductive. For everybody that's interested in a productive and positive relationship with the executive and the council, this is not the way to do it. I'm not speaking for the other council members. I'll speak for myself. I did not commit to rubber stamping everything that the executive puts in front of us, even though we are of the same political party. I work for the citizens, not the Republican Party. At the end of the day, we all serve at the pleasure of the citizens of Wycomico County, and we need to get to a point where we can agree to disagree and move on. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman Merritt. Any other council comments?
I'd like to say one thing. I wasn't going to say anything, but normally I do say things. To piggyback on what Jeff said, I think that in the perfect world, and I mentioned this to John earlier, that to avoid conflict, we should... I would like to see the council president, the vice president, or the vice president, I know he has a job, or Laurel, and the deputy director and the county executive to go over the applications that we get and look at them and pick and choose the best one of the four. If we get four applications, let everybody meet, because I think Rick Pollard used to do that. Everybody meet, go over the best candidate, then bring it before the council. And to me, that would avoid conflict, that they would be on one page before they came to the meeting. And that's not happening because, again, I say, I guess I'm spoiled because I was on the city council, and the city council used to see all the candidates that applied for the job, whatever job it was. And then we would work along with the mayor and choose the one we thought would be the best. And more than likely, we always would went, we all would agree. And I use former Barbara Duncan, when she was hard. We all looked at her qualifications and saw that she was more than qualified, and we were on one page. And we're not always going to agree, and I do agree, we need to move on. I'm serving the constituents, everybody in the county. Although I'm District One, I serve everybody. And I do get questions about the process. And I think if we have to do a charter change or whatever, because if we have to confirm anything, if we don't have to confirm anything, why bring it before us? And apparently, we have to confirm whoever's brought toward us. And I think if we feel that that's not the appropriate person, that we have the right to not approve it. But if we're just going to go and rubber stamp everything that's brought before us, I think that's not fair to the constituents because we need the best qualified person this day and time. And that's about all I got to say.
Councilman Shields?
And again, I think it's very important that the public recognizes that we have approved 33 out of 35. So it's not the council versus the executive's office. We just have a disagreement on these two positions. And the gentleman in the back here is correct. We need to get it worked out. If that means going to court, we go to court. But we have to get it worked out. But I think 33 out of 35 is not bad.
Jeff?
Yes. I'll ditto what Jeff and the other council members said here today. I too have been contacted by numerous people, not even, not just employees, but some employees' spouses that are highly upset at the way their spouse is being treated in the workplace. Very unfortunate. But on a lighter side, some complaints I've had in the past couple of weeks. The city apparently enforced a law that says they have to charge, retailers have to charge for bags. Okay? The city did this, not the county council, okay? We didn't do anything about paper bags. The county council did not. So that's the city's deal. You're welcome to call me and complain about it, but I'll tell you, that's the city's deal. The other thing was the recycling centers. We've, I think all the council members have got a lot of grief in the past few days about those. I don't think it was as much about them being moved as much as it was about them being moved the way they were moved. They were not, nobody knew anything about it until it happened that day. You know, they just disappeared. I think it should have been, it should have been announced. It should have been posted. People would have known that they were going to disappear on a certain date. So I think that was handled incorrectly. Now, don't usually, we don't want to get back and forth in these comments, you know, when people come up to public comments. And somebody made a comment about hiring attorneys. We've already got six attorneys. Actually, I guess if you count the ones that's working on the pension plans and bond councils, you're talking about eight attorneys that's working on the, kind of, the executive side. They actually represent the whole county. And count Mr. Mitchell, we got nine. So I don't know that we need a whole lot more attorneys. I mean, how many attorneys do you want? You know, you've got more than enough for, you've got enough for a baseball team. So anyway, we'll leave that to a discussion later on this afternoon. But thank you. Okay, that's all I have.
Yeah. A couple of quick things. I've also gotten inundated with calls about the recycling centers, about that being changed. I'm sure whatever moves forward, we need to make sure that it's the right process, that people get to have the ability to speak up. You know, a lot of what, a lot of what people think of, when you think of Salisbury City is not actually a city. It's in the county. So a lot of those folks use those centers, especially the one at the Civic Center. That's a really centrally located, relocated space in the city that a lot of folks have used. So, pardon, in the city. Let me be clear. It is in the county, technically in the city. So however we move forward, we need to make sure that folks have access to that and that we, if we need to put up extra signage to prevent other further... A lot of people are trying to recycle things that are not recyclable. We need to make sure that we can continue to tackle that for other reasons. Also want to say, I've had, since I've been on the council, I've had multiple people reach out about that image right there and the one right up here and the one that's on my lapel. This past week, I did actually talk to another individual, so I figured I'd finally bring it up. But the question of the Wycomico County seal, some people have brought up, is to think that this is potentially racist or that we are intentionally treating it more like a mascot. There's always, of course, a process to talk about how this is, you know, this was chosen many years ago. Wycomico is a, you know, it's a name that comes from, obviously from putting together of words of, you know, this place where the homes are built. That's where Wycomico, Wycomickia, comes from. But obviously, we do need to be thoughtful in all of our, in whatever the county puts out. So I don't know what the county is going to continue to do with regard to that, if that stays the same. But I've had certainly enough people bring it up to me over the years and especially more recently. So I figured I'd at least mention it for folks to hear and think through. Last things I'll say, last two things here. I did, Councilman Merritt and I, I don't know if there's others, we got a little bit of a crowd there. I didn't get to see all the folks, but as well as the sheriff and many others, we did attend the Walk for Peace, the vigil after the mass shooting that was in the county a couple of weeks ago. So that was a great event in a very, after a whole day of four and a half inches of rain, it all stopped, opened up to allow us to do a walk through the community. I think it was a great event, really showed the community spirit. But obviously, we need to continue to do much more than thoughts, prayers, and oil. Last thing I'll say, I want to say congratulations to my seatmate here, Mr. Nguyen.
Oh, yeah.
I'll let him talk more if you want, but he and Connor got married this past weekend, and he still takes the time to come into council. So I've certainly been blessed to have an incredible partner in my life. Alyssa is a fantastic human being, so to be able to have that, I know is really great for anyone in any relationship. So congrats, Councilman Nguyen.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shane?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. You know, I've talked to John and Laura about maybe trying to limit it, close sessions as much as possible. I feel like that might be part of the problem, why there's a lot of miscommunication in the community. And to point with Jeff, I agree, we need to start doing better. We need to work together. I know we've appointed 33 people that the executive has put forward, but not all of them have the same weight. And I do, I do understand where Shani's coming from, that we need to, you know, look at, maybe we, I don't know what the process is. Well, I do know what the process is. I just don't think that that's the way that this... I agree with what she's talking about, but the way that our government's set up is, you know, the executive brings the appointments and our council looks at the character, whether they can do the job, if they're qualified or not. That's, you know, we have to see if they're qualified to approve them. And they, the executive is the, you know, the one that does the work in the county. And they pick who they want, and we make sure that they can do the job. And I think a lot of the closed sessions might confuse people on that because, you know, the community doesn't know why we said no to the last two, last two appointments. We just, we just, we made resolutions and we, nobody gave an explanation why we chose no on these two people. And I think maybe we should get a lawyer. And I know Paul Wilber can't work on that because he's, it's a conflict of interest for him to be the attorney. And we do need to get this straightened out because it's, you know, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, and we need to get this figured out because this is, this is hurting, hemorrhaging the county. And if, you know, that's what I have to say. I think we need to do better. I think we need to be more open. I think the people need to know why we denied qualified candidates for those positions. And that's where I'm going to leave it. Thank you.
The only response I would make, James, is that the reason that we do it in closed session is to actually protect the individuals. It's nothing to do with the council wanting to work in secrecy or anything to that effect. I don't think anybody that applies for a job in Wycomico County would want to have an open work session where we sat there and said, and discussed with them exactly how unqualified they were to represent this county. The only way you can really address that is in closed session. It's really to protect the interest of those people who are applying for the job. That's really where that comes down to. Unfortunately, sure, many opportunities where the council would love to be able to tell the public or the newspaper or Facebook, though I don't condemn it, exactly what our situation might be, what our position is. But we're sort of, but we're sort of hamstrung by that because we have a greater responsibility to those individuals that have signed on.
But the reason why I bring that up is because we did it for Dan Cox. And when she wanted to reorganize her office, we did that in open session as well. And it just, you know, I understand she requested them in closed session. I just, you know, I don't know if we can reach out to these people and say, hey, can we do this in open session? Is this, is this something that we can possibly do? Or is this something that we're going to have to do in closed session to protect you? That's, that's all my concern. I just, I just want to see us all work together and, and just get things done for the county.
Let me say this. Once a name is...
It would have been done in open session if they had submitted, had submitted the legislation for it to be done. It was never submitted.
Well, from my understanding, from my understanding is that it's up to the council to decide whether or not we want to do it in open session or not, right? I mean, because she can't tell us to do closed session or not, right?
We didn't have to do a closed session. All she had to do was submit it.
Right.
We don't have to do a closed session. She could have submitted it without a closed session.
Mr. Mitchell, you were going to say?
Basically, what Councilman Holloway said was exactly what I was going to say. It never was presented, these two were never presented to the council in legislative session.
Why did we create resolutions if it was never submitted, then?
If you, I, excuse me, it should take a long time to go through that, but the Where-Are Clause is in the resolution pretty much explains that.
Okay.
Any other, any other comments? Seeing on entertainment, oh, hang on a second. Right here. Entertaining motion to adjourn from legislative session going to open work sessions followed by closed work sessions pursuant to the general provisions, Article Section 3-305B18 as follows: To discuss the appointment of an internal auditor to protect the privacy of the individual and to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation to protect the county, county's legal position. That is a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Pos. Legislative session is adjourned. First open work session has proposed amendments to the Wycomico County Pension Plan. I think we have Ms. Donna O'Hara is here from the director, as our director of human resources, and Mr. Wilber.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. Your page.
So what we have here is like, well, what we hope is the final version of amendments to the pension plan. We did a resolution that had all the law enforcement-related changes to the pension plan, trying to line up the county code, the personnel manual, and the pension plan. And I think as far as the pension plan's concerned, there's a few more adjustments that were not related to law enforcement, and that's what we're bringing forward. Donna can go through them.
Correct. The two changes were actually just to be able to include all county employees in the five years of military credit. Right now, only the FOP employees are eligible for that, and we would like to be able to extend that to all county employees who have served our country. We feel like it would be a good recruiting tool and that it would also be a way to make it fair across the board rather than just segmenting out only law enforcement and their service being of value enough to do that with them versus the rest of the county employees that have served our country. There is about 6% of our total population that have served the country and been in the military. I have, right now, where is it? 16, approximately 16 are FOP and then 27 are non-law enforcement FOP. But we would, again, like to be considered an employee who is veteran-friendly. So it would be a good thing for us to be able to go out and market and share that information with potential employees to bring them on board and actually keep them with us longer.
Do we have a cost estimate for that?
Well, it would vary, again, depending on how many were, you know, we had. Basically, they would just get five years of credit, up to five years, no more than that. So if they were at their 19th year and they had six years of credit, they could get to their five year... I don't know what the numbers would be for sure.
That's for retaining current employees?
Right.
And then for attracting new employees, it would be?
It would depend on their salary, their position. It would depend on, there's a lot of factors that would be involved in that. But again, it's, right now, it's at about 6% of the total population of our employees that are military, that have military service, so.
I'll just say it would be important to be able to have some, I don't know if other counties are doing this also.
Sure.
There are other ones in the state are doing this?
Well, actually, I don't know if others are as far as the rest of their employees. So as far as money goes, we could certainly kind of do maybe like a scenario or I could work with Pam or we could work with Pam to kind of get some numbers as to what that would look like. But again, it would be based on their position, whether they work in roads, you know, or if they work in county executive's office, things like that. It would just depend a lot on that.
Yeah, I think it's a laudable effort just trying to make sure that we understand the cost.
Would it be retroactive to the ones already here?
It would, they would be included in that. Mm-hmm. Yes. That would be the idea, is for it to be, people to be grandfathered to be able to be a part of it, sure.
If this was passed, how many are eligible to retire?
I haven't got a number on who right now could retire from the county. But I can certainly get you that information.
Thanks.
The other, the other change would be to, the other... The other, the other change would be to, the, the other main thing would be for, if someone is hurt on the job, and they have to retire on accidental disability on the job, to have them be able to receive their health insurance at the active rate versus the retired rate, because if they were to get hurt earlier on in their career, or have a family to take care of, and they were working for us, and it was no fault of their own, for them to be able to have their health insurance paid at the active rate, so that it could save them a little bit of money, and it wouldn't be such a hardship for them. That's really the only other big change that was in it, so.
As part of what we had discussed and agreed with when we were doing the collective bargaining, correct?
It's already in the personnel manual, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
There was some talk about making it retired, but I'm just advocating to keep it at active.
Yeah.
Any idea of the fiscal note on, on that?
I can certainly find out for you.
Questions from anyone? I don't have any questions.
I think if someone's injured on the job, in the personnel manual, again, we talked about this, if it says they're supposed to get it at, at an employee rate, current employee rate, I think they should get it.
Yeah.
I agree.
Any other questions? All right, well, when do you think this will, when will this be coming back to us formally?
I, I'll get, I'll get with Pam and issue, get caught up, but we'll get together, and I'll see if I can get you some information, and I'll just send it out.
Wonderful. Any other questions from anybody? All right, thank you very much. Mr. Wilber, did you have any comments?
Just trying to move this one forward, wrap this up.
Thank you. Our next item we have on the agenda is the proposed amendments to the capital improvement plan for the fiscal year twenty-four to twenty-eight. This is in reference specifically to the Salisbury Ocean City, Wycomica County Airport. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Rudy?
One statement I'd like to make at the beginning, I would recommend, if we are going this route, that we talk about amendments to the capital budget. I know this got listed as both the CIP and the capital budget, but my recommendation, if we're moving the route of, we're only amending the thing that has to be amended, that in the future, we state these as just amending the capital budget. My suggestion, to go along with what we just did with the fuel farm and the Board of Education. So when we would come to you with a resolution on this, if council is in agreement, it would just say that we're amending the capital budget.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'll just say for past practice, we've always amended both documents. I know that our former attorney, Mr. Bob Taylor, highly recommended that we do that. Now, we haven't consulted with Mr. Mitchell about that yet, perhaps council would want to do that.
I agree. I like to keep it a nice, nice tight package. I can't tell you how many times, just in trying to review either a budget or capital expenses, you try to go back to a prior, especially with the capital improvement plan, you try to go, go back to what it used to be, and it nowhere near resembles where it ended up. So, and, and sometimes projects get completely dropped, and you're, and I think Mr. Atkins had asked, in reference to Barron Creek, wondering, well, what happened to it? And I'm like, well, you know what, I don't really know. And people shouldn't have to ask those questions.
And, and that's why I'm saying, the thing, the document that lives is the document that, is the budget, which is what we have to operate under. And so, amending the capital improvement plan, I never republish a capital improvement plan. It's very easy for me to give you a new capital budget each time, if you wanted it, because it's two pages. If we want to amend the capital improvement plan every time we amend this, and you want something to be able to reference, that is a massive document each time. So I, I know I'm hijacking this a little bit, but, again, it goes back to the fact that, in my opinion, charter states, and Bob Taylor and I had this debate when he was with the city of Salt, and Shaney will, I think, remember that same debate. And we moved from doing the capital improvement plan and the budget to just the budget, because that is the only thing that allows finance to fund anything. I can have five thousand changes to the capital improvement plan, and if council never approves the change in the capital budget, finance can't make any changes. We can't fund anything, we can't do anything. So, the only document, in my view, that means anything after we issue it, is the budget, because it's the only thing in that fiscal year that I can follow. Again, if you guys propose us to change fifty things in the CIP, unless you change the capital budget, I don't do anything, because it doesn't have any funding attached to it. Only the capital budget has funding. So, let's talk about the funding thing, and we can debate further at another time, whether or not we put both on the resolution or one. I have stated my opinion, I'll leave it there. Okay, Tony.
Mr. Rudy?
Good morning. So just to give you a little background on this project, so a couple of years ago, when we were awarded the, the CARES funding, we kind of priorities, came up with a list of priority projects for the airport, this parking lot was one of them. The pavement's very old, it's, it's probably thirty-plus years old. Our, our intention at the beginning was to mill the lot, or multiple lots, repave them. However, over the planning process and the design, we, we got looking at the project a little bit further, we discovered that the, the subbase for the parking lot was less than ideal, so we have to address that in order for the new pavement to last longer. There are lighting issues in those lots that need to be addressed, they're, they're very poorly lit with, with some old lights. There were accessibility issues with the crosswalk that basically leads across the road into a curb and an island. And as we were dealing with all of that, we discovered there were some ongoing drainage issues on two sides of the building. And the only way to really address that was to bring it in with this project, because the two tie together. If we were to do one first, and then the other, we would be basically impacting the first project when we started the second. So we decided to combine them. However, we are left with a, we are a little over budget with the bids that we got, and we did find some, some other money we were able to shift around, but we do need additional funds to be able to make this project happen.
Questions, counsel?
Mr. President?
Josh?
Yeah, just clarity on, I guess, on, well, I know, obviously, I think we already started to highlight some of the concerns, I thought, that I, well, I've been going to the airport for most of my life, and it popped over, I, I've seen how things have or haven't changed. I'm glad that we are moving in this direction of continuing to, to address this. The subfloor, sub, whatever you want to call it.
Subbase.
Subbase, right, there you go. That, I'm assuming, is basically, is that, it's preventing it from sinking further, or, or other, does that help keep the?
Yeah. So any pavement section, you have to do pavement properly, you want to make sure you have a stable subbase. If it's just, if it's just dirt you're paving over, which pretty much is the case, your pavement's going to fail a lot earlier, it's going to flex more, so we have to somehow beef that up. We had several options, we did negotiate with the, with the low contract, or low bid contractor on this, rather than bringing in stone, which is a little bit more expensive. We can treat the soil with a, it's called a soil cement treatment, where they mix a certain percentage of, of cement in the soil, it helps firm it up, not as hard as concrete, but enough so that it can sustain a, a higher load without the deflection you would get.
I bring all that up, because obviously, you mentioned flooding issue, we get heavier rains these days, is there, you know, impervious surface, if we could, if we can continue to knock down the amount of impervious surface that we have in the county, I think that's good for many reasons, including our whip goals or other, is, was that ever looked at, or is that a possibility to have impervious parking?
Not for this particular project, but we did, we do have some old hanger slabs that we're going to be removing, and we are very aware of that, because anything we build, you know, we have to try to offset where we are. So we are actually removing some old hanger slabs with, with a different project that's coming up. And we have some other slabs, too, that at some point will, will need to get removed once we figure out exactly what we're going to develop in that area.
Yes. Mr. Rudy, the, the parking lot, is it the, the parking lot where all the cars park, plus all the little side lots where the employees park? Is it the whole?
No, so it's not the public lot, or, or the, what's designated as our airport employee lot, these are the lots that are dedicated for the Piedmont, for their, for their headquarters offices, for the maintenance people, and all those people that work in the hangars.
Okay.
I believe there was, in recent memory, I don't think it's since I've been in this position, but I know we've done some work on the employee, our, our, our airport employee and the passenger lots. So those aren't what this is.
Yeah, and, and there was an additional Piedmont lot that was done probably about four or five years ago, and one of the things they found then, they did run into similar problems with this, basically a nonexistent subbase, and that, you know, they didn't do the exploratory work before, and that popped up, and that dramatically drove the cost of the project up.
Christian, I had, Mr. Rudy, is, in the twenty-four adopted budget, there was a reference to federal funding for a parking lot, about two-point-six million, I believe it's a Piedmont parking lot.
Can I bring that with me?
Rehabilitation in the Piedmont parking lot.
We had, we were.
It's anticipated, it's not, it's not, it's, it was listed under a chart, a table referencing anticipated grant funding. So I guess my question was, how does that come into play if that comes to fruition?
I don't, I don't have that with me.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember seeing that, or dedicating that for, for Piedmont. The only money that we, we were planning on dedicating towards it was approximately three-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, out of the CARES, out of CARES.
And it could be, because again, CARES is federal, so that could be part of that number.
There are other CARES projects, too, that are, that are coming up.
Am I mixing it up when we were talking about the Piedmont parking lot versus the regular parking lot? Or is it all the same?
The Piedmont, Piedmont parking lot is really the only, the only parking lot that we're planning on doing, at least this year.
I mean, if you, you have time to review it and just get it back to us, you can let Mr. Rudy know, maybe. I, I just saw that, and I seen, well, maybe they're, they're looking for some type of reimbursement down the road.
What, I'm sorry, what document was that?
It was in the fiscal year twenty-four adopted budget. In the PDF that I have, it's on page twenty-five, it's under, it's under Exhibit D, anticipated grant funding that was adopted. And it's specifically listed as expected amount for capital from the federal government, two-point-six million rehab Piedmont parking lot.
We'll take a look, and we'll get you an answer.
All right.
I don't want to answer at this moment, because I know.
Yeah, that's fine. So, with the proposed amendments, I guess this will be coming back to the council?
Yes, it would come back as a resolution.
Okay.
To amend the budget, and.
It's actually a public hearing, it'll come back as a, public hearing and resolution.
But, yes, the public hearing, if I, if I remember, capital only needs to be advertised one week, though.
Correct.
So this one, I believe, could go on the next council meeting if council is agreeable to that.
I'm going to consult with Mr. Mitchell on whether or not we to amend both documents or just one.
Okay. Sounds good. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Next item we have on the agenda is a letter of opposition to propose changes to Reagan National Airport's high-density slot and perimeter rules and potential impact to Piedmont Airlines. Mr. Rudy, I think there was some concern that the, what they could be doing, trying to propose to Reagan National could impact us locally, but I guess we were looking for your feedback.
There's probably a small possibility it could impact us. The Washington Reagan Airport is, is very congested now, and that's why they do have the perimeter rule and the slot rule. But, and, and that was put in place years ago to really utilize that airport as more of a, I guess, a local, more regional airport for air traffic, and then Dulles, the plan was to use that as, as more for, you know, longer haul travel, just because they had more, more land area to develop and, and, you know, house the airlines to be able to do this whole thing together. So it's worked, it's worked relatively well over the years, but there has been some movement lately to, to try to get rid of the slot and the perimeter rule, and I, I just think it would be in our best, best interest to keep it the way it is, it seems to be working fine. Not that necessarily impact our airport in the future, but you never know.
Questions? So you're in favor of the letter of words?
Yes.
Certainly. Okay, counsel?
How would this, how would this still affect our airport?
If we were ever to get direct flights to Washington National, which, you know, like I said, I doubt we will, just because it's so congested right now, and it's, it's tough to get in there, but I would still like to protect that interest, however small it, possibility is.
I mean, is this something we really should be putting our nose in, I guess, per se? Really? I mean.
It keeps the option open, I mean, it'd be, it'd be great to have, obviously, we would love to have more lines coming out, and people can connect to it.
Yeah, I would say if, if there was ever.
Would this, would this keep us from getting flights somewhere else? How would this keep us from getting flights to another airport?
Well, like I said, if, if this changed, and they opened up Washington National to more flights, there's going to be a lot more competition wanting to get flights in there as, outside of that perimeter, so it opens up to quite a lot more.
Wouldn't that open it up for us to get flights in there?
Well, like I said, right now, it's pretty restricted. If they want to get rid of this rule, or these, I should say, this combination of rules, there would be less of a chance we would be able to get in there.
So you're saying, I'm sorry, were you done?
Yeah, I'm done, I'm done.
So you're saying, if we submit this letter, it's going to help us in the future potentially fly into Reagan, right? But not now, clearly, because they're too congested.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the, the reality is, I don't think we'll see flights into Reagan anytime soon, just because of the nature of what it is, but if they were to get rid of this, then I would say that, that goes away completely.
Yeah, okay.
So submitting the letter gives us more possibilities.
Poten-, yes, potential.
Potential possibilities.
Exactly.
Without submitting it, that number decreases.
Yes.
Or the percentage.
So, by submitting this letter, this would help us potentially grow our airport, which is something we've been trying to do for some years now?
Yeah, yeah.
Potentially.
Potentially.
Yeah. How's it going to do that?
It's a long shot, Joe. Yeah. It's a long shot, we know that.
And I mean, and also.
It is, I mean, it is a very.
Also, we deal with the Maryland Aviation, I mean, the Maryland Aviation group might not appreciate this letter going, they might not like it. I mean, we look to them for a lot of support.
I trust Mr. Rudy in that, in guiding us there, but certainly, we want to keep options on the table for us to, you know, we've invested a lot into this airport, it's great to see it change from over a very short period of time, so the more options we can have, the better. So I appreciate it.
Consensus, yes? For the letter, to send the letter?
Yes.
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 Joe?
We, we'll get the letter. We've got too many other problems to deal with.
Let's add on that.
Thank you, Mr. Rudy.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Next item on the agenda is the proposed amendment for the budget control document to provide a reclassification of position in reference to emergency services. If you could state for the public your name and position, we'd appreciate it, thank you.
Pam Olin, again, Finance Director.
Good morning, Lorenzo Cropper.
Good morning.
Emergency Services Director.
Mr. Cropper?
Hopkins Deputy Director of Emergency Services.
Morning.
Good to have you here, sorry to hold you up so long.
So, Emergency Services approached, approached, approached administration and requested the reclassification of a position after the budget process was completed. This position would be reclassified from just administrative position to a Hazard Material Coordinator. The position would take on additional emergency management operation responsibilities, including when the, an EOC is activated. when the, an EOC is activated. Additionally, they would assist in planning and risk management for the county as well as handle our hazardous material billing and for our county volunteer fire departments. This position would require them to have a specific certification, which is more than the current position requires. This position was discussed with HR as to what it should be graded at, and the recommendation is that the position be reclassified from a, I think it's an M33?
32.
32, up to an M37. I wasn't seeing, I missed it at the beginning of the paragraph, sorry. To an M37. As we have historically done, we like to budget at the midpoint to give us the ability to hire somebody who might have previous experience in this, in this area. There is current vacancy savings in the department due to.
Vacancies.
That word, sorry. There's current vacancies, so there is savings. So there is no request for additional funding this year, so the only request would be that we would amend the position control document with the knowledge that in next fiscal year there would be additional costs to the county to have this position filled.
Is an outside person or does he already work?
Pardon me?
Does the person already work in the agency now or outside?
No, this would be advertised at.
Okay.
Any questions somewhere anywhere? Everybody okay with this?
Yes.
All right, we're good. So what happens when you get here three minutes before lunch?
[laughing].
No, it's, you know, you tell us it's a needed position and that the pay has to be commensurate. We appreciate your, everything you've been doing and your assistance in it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hurley, yes?
I was just going to clarify, maybe I missed it, I'm sorry. Did you say, is this position filled or is it vacant?
It's a vacant position.
It is a vacant position.
It's a current vacant position, so there's no person in the position that we're looking to reclassify. Thus, if council pass, again, the budget amendment that would be presented would just be a budget amendment to amend the position control document to give a dollar amount at the midpoint to allow us to advertise and try to hire.
That's it.
Okay, all right. Well, great. Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm assuming this can come back at the next meeting in.
Not sure of the workload yet for the next meeting, but we'll try to put it on as quickly as we can.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. This time entertaining motion to adjourn for lunch for half an hour. Second?
Second.
Means be adjourned for one half an hour.